The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of March 16, 2022. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on this afternoon's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are also given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give it to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on this afternoon's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify the agenda item on which they wish to speak will be presumed to be speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any public speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we also have not received any speaker cards regarding items not on the agenda.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Reports item 3A, proposed charter amendments for the November 2022 general election.
Thank you. City Manager Clegg.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I actually defer this item to City Attorney, Mr. Arrow.
Thank you, Mayor.
Second time, sorry.
So Mayor and Councilmembers, tonight what we are going to do is we are going to have a continuation of the discussion that we started on March 2 about a proposed charter amendment which would allow the city manager to retain a fire and a police chief from an organization outside the city limits. And so what we've done tonight is you're going to have two PowerPoints, and right now my secretary Vicki is going to pass around the material that Ashley Zombro, my deputy city attorney, too, is going to go over with you first. And again, that just summarizes what, again, we went over last time. And Ashley's going to be presenting to you and talking to you about some potential ballot language that we need to come to some conclusion on here relatively soon. When she's finished, I'm then going to give you another very short PowerPoint on the do's and don'ts of advocating for and against the ballot measure. So with that, I will turn it over to Ashley.
Thank you. Let's see. Is this on? Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. So what's being passed out to you right now, you will see a red line version of the proposed ballot measure. This is based on the feedback and direction that we received at the March 2 city council meeting. If you recall, the city attorney's office provided a variety of options for proposed charter amendments governing both the selection of the chief of police as well as the chief of the fire department. I'm going to run through a PowerPoint presentation, but just like we said at the last meeting, I actually encourage you to look at the actual red line document in front of you. I think it might be a little bit easier to follow along. What you're looking at in front of you right now shows you what the proposed ballot measure would be, meaning it shows, consistent with the direction that we received from the council at the last meeting, in sequential order, the sections of the charter that would be amended. So the very first section that you see there is Section 194, and that is governing the chief of the fire department. The next section is appointment of the chief of police, which is Section 229 of the charter. And lastly, it is that section regarding promotions within the police department, and that's Section 230. So up on the screen right now, just for everyone who's here in attendance, that's what that language would look like. That shows you the edits that we discussed at the March 2 meeting. To run through each of those sections, we'll start with the fire chief. So as you see, this has not changed at all from what we presented to you at the last meeting. It's a very simple strike-through, removing the language that says "from among the membership of the Bakersfield Fire Department." It's a very clean edit. It's fairly simple and straightforward. Based on our prior direction from the council, there was a desire to include this with the sections for the chief of police so that there's parity between the fire chief and the police chief. The next section, this is Section 229, appointment of the chief of police. The difference here from what was presented to you last time was, if you recall, there was some discussion about a desire to keep in the charter the language that requires a minimum of five years' experience as a regularly paid peace officer to remain with the chief of police. That language was previously in the next section of the charter, Section 230, which you'll see in a moment. We have moved that language up into this section so that Section 229 becomes entirely devoted to selection of the chief of police. So it achieves the goal of removing the limitation that requires that a chief of police be selected from within the department, but it adds in that language that still requires the minimum five years' experience in order to be eligible for that appointment. Next is Section 230. Again, this is what was presented to the council. It's a little bit of a longer section. It encompasses a little bit more than just the chief of police. So the desire here, and based on what was presented to the council and the direction at the last meeting, was to keep the language really clean and straightforward, to completely remove that entire second paragraph. That last sentence in there is where that five years' experience regarding the chief of police currently exists. That is now moved up into the prior Section 229, but everything else is stricken in order to deal with only promotions from within the department for positions other than the chief of police. Now, I'm going to pause for just a moment. What was included in the agenda packet was actually a clean revised version of the charter. So if all of these revisions were accepted, that's what it would look like. So if you have those two documents side by side, that's kind of a good comparison for you to see what exactly is being amended and stricken from the charter language compared to what it would look like if all of those changes were accepted. So with that, I'll pause for just a moment. I don't know if there's any questions or feedback. I believe this is consistent with council's prior direction. If there aren't any objections or major concerns, this would be the ballot measure that would come forward at a future meeting, I believe in April, for you to actually vote on. But we wanted to present it for you to see what it would look like based on the discussion that we had at the last meeting.
Any questions? Don't see any.
Okay.
Now you have. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, in Section 230, this would enable commissioners, as it's written, to look for individuals to be hired other than the police chief as well from outside of the city. Is that correct?
That's correct. So it would permit laterals for other positions other than the chief of police.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
And forgive me, if you already explained this, I missed it because I was trying to read and listen to you at the same time. So I might have missed, if you already told. Each of them says these, a list of candidates will be furnished by the commissioners. Can you state for all of us exactly who are the commissioners providing these lists of candidates?
Yes, certainly. So there is the Police Civil Service Commission. Those are the commissioners. That is the commission that is created in the charter with the authority to make these decisions as designated in the charter. So when there's reference to commissioners in the charter, it's referring to the Police Civil Service Commission.
Okay. And that would apply to, I think, promotions within the departments, too, as commissioners, as opposed to the chief deciding the commission. Maybe it's done like that now, but the commissioners, if it's other than the chief, if it's other promotions, the lists are provided by the commissioners?
Yes. So if I'm understanding your question correctly, so the commission, typically there's an eligible list where the commission will certify that list of names that are eligible then for, depending on the position, for hiring.
Promotions.
Yes, for promotion within the department. Yes.
Okay. And last, maybe I missed this, too. The three proposed, the language in the three paragraphs for ballot measure, are you saying that these three, as written, would be the choices that people make on a ballot? They would say either one, two, or three?
Are you talking about the red line sections of the charter?
Or are we to choose one for the ballot, or is this a choose between the, for the, on the ballot itself? Would people have these three to choose from, or would there just be one of them?
There would just be one. So that's actually the next part that I'll just get to right now. So the next piece of information that we have before you are proposed ballot labels, or, in other words, the statement of the measure. That's what will show up on the actual ballot for the voters. The reason that we are presenting you with some options is because the purpose of the ballot label is basically to summarize what the proposed charter amendments will be. According to the Elections Code, there are certain requirements. For example, the ballot label can't be any longer than 75 words. It shouldn't be argumentative or prejudicial in order to sway a measure one way or another. So it really needs to be neutral language that accurately explains what the proposed charter amendments will be. In this instance, there are three different sections of the charter that would be included within one ballot measure. So we've come up with some sample proposed ballot language that could be presented to the voters, but there would only be one that would be on the ballot for the voters to consider.
Okay, and last question. All three are trying to say the same thing.
Correct.
Okay. So you might, if you go through them, do you have any insight into how one says it different from another, or one you think might be more clear than another?
I do, absolutely. So I will just move on in my presentation. So the first one that I have up on the screen, I'm referring to as "written in the negative." You'll see that the way it's written is really focused on technically the edits that will be made to the charter. So I think of it as a little bit more technically descriptive for what those proposed charter amendments would be. It reads, you know, "Shall the Bakersfield City Charter be amended to remove all requirements that the fire chief and police chief be appointed from within their respective departments, and to remove the charter provision which requires a police officer to have three years' experience before being eligible for promotion to other positions within the police department except police chief?" That's an example of how it could read if you focus on describing what will be stricken from those sections of the charter. Now alternatively, we put together a proposed ballot measure that is more in the affirmative. So instead of technically describing the edits, instead describing, maybe it's a little bit easier to understand what it allows the department and the city to do. So instead of focusing on the language that is removed, we worded it so that it would allow the city charter, the city manager, to hire a fire chief and a police chief from outside of the fire and police departments, and to allow a police officer to be eligible for promotion for other positions within the police department except police chief without requiring three years' experience. And alternatively, we have a third option here, which is a little bit of a blending of the two. So we're describing both language that's stricken from the charter as well as what it allows, you know, the impact of that amendment. We put these before you tonight basically to consider some of this language. Certainly, if you have concerns or objections or strong feelings about, you know, really liking one or not liking one, that would be helpful for us. This ballot label will also be in the resolution that council votes on when they call the election because that's the language that gets placed on the ballot. So we wanted to put some options in front of you for some feedback and direction. Of course, you know, it might take time to digest and think about, too, which is perfectly fine. There's no, you don't have to take a vote or action tonight. But we were looking for some feedback and direction if you had some strong feelings one way or another.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think, personal opinion, the first one is confusing when it's all stated in the negative. People don't know if they're voting for or against sometimes when they're all stated that way. But the three-year thing is confusing to me without the negative, I guess, without the reference to the charter. So I like the third one. I think the first part is clear about you can hire the fire and police chief from outside, and the three-year is coming up because it's in the existing charter and we need to remove it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually going to disagree with my colleague, Councilmember Smith. I actually liked the first option, stated the negative, and here's why. 99.9% of the population of Bakersfield has never read the city charter, and so they don't know what's in it. And when they read these options, you know, it begs the question, you know, the city manager is hiring the police chief, why not the mayor? Why not the council? Why not? And so it leaves all this other room, all this room for interpretation of other scenarios. And so I think by stating in the negative, you kind of keep it restrictive, kind of explains what's in the charter currently, and it gives people the option to change that. I think it's simpler, and the simpler is always the better option.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Gray.
Well, excuse me, I guess we're going back and forth here, but I would respectfully disagree with Councilmember Gonzalez. And when I read these, I read them at home Monday and went over each one of them, and I would agree with Councilmember Smith that the third one seems to be the easiest for the average person out there trying to just vote. I know so many times these measures on ballots are just, you can wade knee-deep in them, waist-deep, and you still don't understand what they're saying. So I am in agreement with the third one. I think it's the most simply put, and yeah, that's the direction. I would go with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we might as well put them all on the list because it's my understanding that the less we say, the easier it is for voters to read and understand what we're trying to do. And while I don't really like some of the way this is worded, Smith, I think the less, the better. You know, I like number two, but it needs a little revision because it's still very confusing. Thank you.
I may also add, Ashley, if you don't mind, that, you know, these aren't the only three. Feel free to go home, massage them, talk to your neighbors and friends. If there's another way that you want it written, give me a call. And you don't, and we don't have to have them in one statement. You can always separate them out if you'd like. Remember, the problem with separating them out is you may not, right, we may not have parity between the fire chief and the police chief, but maybe we should give some thought, Ashley, to maybe taking the three-year portion out and putting that on a, you know, on a separate statement. So we're, again, we're still kind of, we're still going through this, but we don't have a lot of time, but as you know, time gets away from us. So we, any advice or comments that you can give us that would shorten this, because we're going to keep coming back to you until we narrow it down to two, and then eventually you will have to vote. So by all means, if you have any suggestions, if not tonight, call Ashley. Don't call me.
Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I like that idea of having two separate measures. I think they are two separate issues. Number one is key, and the one that we're really here for is, you know, can we hire the police chief and fire chief from the outside? That's one measure. And then the second measure talks about the three-year thing. So that would be my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gray.
And I would agree with that. I think that's what's confusing this whole thing, is trying to lump the three-year in with the police and the chief, fire chief. So yeah, I would totally agree. We can separate it into two. I think it's going to make more sense to the public.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Freeman.
Well, without, I could say, I agree with my colleagues. I agree with the comment of Councilman Gonzalez that simpler is better, and from a simple understanding, number one is simpler. And I think that's important, really easy to understand. But if breaking it into two sentences makes that even simpler and more clear, I'm totally fine with that. So I might request that you just take number one and try to make it in two sentences because it is really easy to understand. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Arias.
Just in agreement with Councilmembers Gray and Bob Smith, I think separating the two would make the most sense. And actually, a question for Councilmember Smith. Were you referring to two or three?
I still like the positive. I think two or three is the, when it's stated in the negative is what I don't like.
I'm in full agreement of that.
Colleagues, are there any other questions or comments?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zombro. Is there anything else? City Attorney, anyone, anything further?
Okay, we have one more PowerPoint. So dovetailing off of what Ms. Zombro went through with you, it's, I think, appropriate at this point to have just a short PowerPoint on the do's and don'ts of ballot measuring, campaigning. For many of you, this is a repeat because you just went through the Measure N, so you know, presumably you remember what you can and cannot do. We have a general rule that basically says you can use city funds as long as the information activity is not prohibited by the Constitution, and as long as the money used is to provide information that is accurate, fair, and impartial. Keeping in mind that both of those general rules apply also to employees, they apply also to our consultants, any consultants that are hired with regard to the ballot measure that we're talking about putting on the ballot come November. And again, any actions that don't fall under this general rule, you can't tuck them in nicely. We then want to step back and we want to look at what's the timing on that and what's the style, and I kind of call it the intangibles. You know, sometimes something just doesn't feel right. This is a little bit, I think, much simpler than Measure N, and so I don't think you'll have any issues with it. A list of the do's, this is what we can do. We certainly can use public funds to talk about the preparation of the measure. That's exactly what we're doing right now, tonight, and we will continue to do that. We can certainly use public funds to identify any programs or services that are going to be cut if a measure passes. I don't believe that that's the case here. We can use public funds to include any informational or nonpartisan articles. The last city manager, you may recall, did that with the gen info on Measure N. There was usually little blips of factual information within that article. The council will be asked at some point coming up here very soon if you would like to author the ballot argument either for or against the measure. You are the first ones in the election code. You have the priority of actually submitting that argument for or against, and in doing so, you would be utilizing public funds to do that. It would be permissible for you to state the agency's position on the measure, even if you decided not to actually draft the argument for or against. You can certainly, again, inform the public and the media. You can have staff perform what I would call informational presentations if a member of the community requests, even an organization, so the Lions, Rotary Club, et cetera. That would be permissible. And again, city employees, staff, officials, if you're on your own time and dime, there's certainly nothing wrong with advocating for or against the measure. A list of the don'ts, this is really what we want to concentrate on. Public funds may not be used to purchase, distribute any materials that advocate a yes or a no on the measure. Public funds may not be used to purchase any promotional items, an ad on the radio or the TV or stickers. Public funds may not be used to disseminate campaign literature if that were to be prepared by any type of a private measure proponent or opponent. Public funds may not be used to contribute to campaigns that are, again, supporting or opposing the measure. Public funds may not be used to pay for any printing supplies or staff time to generate materials on behalf of the measure. And again, using city staff or employees to campaign one way or the other is not permissible. And a little, again, in terms of public employees and officials, again, this is particularly targeted to city employees. City employees would be prohibited from engaging in political activities during the work hours on this measure. That, again, would include anything you see on the screen, distributing any type of pamphlet, attending campaign meetings, or wearing campaign buttons, hats, or anything along those lines that, again, would tend to sway someone one way or the other on this particular measure. To repeat the general rule, you may advocate on your own time and your own dime. Keep in mind, however, that violations carry very stiff penalties, the worst of which, of course, is the last bullet, Penal Code section that it is a felony to misappropriate public funds. Again, tonight, as Ashley indicated, we're here to answer any questions you have, encourage suggestions or comments that you have on the actual red line that Ashley provided to you, or any of the three ballot measures. We will come back and present those ballot measures to you again, and we'll separate them out. We're not asking for any motion, and we will return on, probably on April 20th. I don't think any earlier than that. I want to make sure that you're all here, but we'll have a resolution, and we will be presenting things, and you will need to vote. And at some time, you're going to need to vote as to whether or not you want to have the argument for or against the measure because, again, the clerk is going to have to be calling this election with a resolution, I believe, by June, and everything needs to be done. So if you have any questions, feel free to pick up the phone and give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman.
This would be for either city attorney or city manager, just an idea, since, you know, we saw, we got a cross-section of how our first impressions, and many of us were different, okay? Because we're all different, and we look at things differently. Is there any value in doing a focus group? Just, you have enough cross-section in your city employees from incomes, from, you know, from people who work in the field, people from mid-management, upper management, to just, whatever the rules are, 12 people or something, and present the language, you get a little feedback, which is the most easy to understand. It's just an idea. Maybe you debate it and say it's a bad idea. But since we all, I'm not sure, that we're a cross-section of the population, to give you true feedback on what was the simplest to understand. That's all you're really asking. So just a thought. You might want to follow it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Anyone else? Vice Mayor? Receive and file. You have a motion to receive and file. Please cash your votes. Oh.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Parlier absent.
And now, next item, please, Madam Clerk.
Reports item 3B, presentation from Caltrans staff on safety improvements to State Route 204, Union Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we'll be receiving a presentation that's a follow-up to a conversation that city officials had with other partners, including the current Council of Governments and Caltrans a little more than a month ago in response to the city's inquiries about safety along Union Avenue. And our Public Works Director, Greg Strakelous, will introduce the topic briefly and then kick it over to Caltrans.
Back in February, the city council passed a resolution strongly encouraging Caltrans to take a hard look at the safety issues along State Road 204. And preceding that, the current Council of Governments also wrote a strongly worded letter reinforcing the safety concerns of the community. Since that time, Caltrans city staff have been talking to Caltrans. Deputy Director John Liu is here to make a presentation to discuss some of the safety, proposed safety improvements that Caltrans intends to consider. And with that, I introduce Mr. John Liu.
Great, thank you so much. And again, thank you, Mayor and council members, for having me to talk about State Route 204. So I do want to talk about the safety improvements that we want to do on the Union Avenue portion of State Route 204. It will be as part of the Clean California project that Caltrans is currently working on. So I do also want to cover the scope of the Clean California project. I would welcome any kind of comments, concerns, questions regarding either Clean California or specifically the safety improvements that we are planning to do on State Route 204, Union Avenue, which potentially also includes a lane reduction, one lane of State Route 204 between Brendage Avenue and approximately 18th Street. So I do want to very quickly cover, Caltrans has a revised complete streets policy, we have a brand-new road safety policy, give an overview of State Route 204, talk about the speed limit on State Route 204, how they're set, and how there may be a potential change, talk about many projects that we're currently working on, on State Route 204, as well as going into more detail on the Clean California project. So to begin with, Caltrans is very aggressively trying to install complete street elements onto all of our state highways where it's appropriate, particularly when the state highway is a main street. A lot of times, the highway goes through developed areas. Certain highways have divided communities. We're trying to mend the communities back together by providing opportunities for vulnerable users, particularly those who walk, those who bike, those who may use scooter, to get around the community, and we want them to do it safely. So anytime we have an opportunity to include these elements, we very much want to do it. And just last month, our director, who has since gone to agency, Toks Omashaken, he's now Secretary of Calsta, he signed a new director's policy, which kind of reinforces that safety is Caltrans's highest priority. And we have actually a Vision Zero intention of reducing all fatalities and serious injuries, not just on state highways, but really, we're looking at all California roadways by 2050. And we do have a safety-first mindset. So when we're looking at balancing the various needs, safety, operations, delay, the focus will always be on safety. And we also have, as part of our Caltrans Strategic Management Plan, equity is one of the biggest focus areas. We want to lift up the areas that have been harmed by the state highway system in the past. So we want to focus on improving areas where the state highway is within disadvantaged So our road safety director's policy adopts the safe system approach. So just, you know, very quickly, we consider any type of fatality or serious injury on a state highway just unacceptable. We understand that users make mistakes, drivers make mistakes, but when they make mistakes, we don't feel that it should result in a fatality or a serious injury. We also know that humans are vulnerable. Humans could only tolerate so much kinetic forces before trauma, injury, death results. And one of the things is speed. The higher speed that vehicles travel, striking a pedestrian or a bicyclist, the more kinetic energy that is transferred. So we want to lower speeds where possible in areas where we do have those types of users. Safety is proactive. We don't want to just wait until there's issues, but we want to try to prevent issues from happening. And responsibility is shared. It's not just on engineering, it's also including, you know, enforcement, it's dealing with education. Multiple parties, Caltrans, city, we're relevant also with the county, and emergency services, and various stakeholders. So State Route 204, the character changes a lot, where it starts from 99 Freeway, going down to Brendage Lane. South of Brendage Lane, it ceases to be a state highway, it becomes a city street or a county road. It used to be US 99. That portion was relinquished back around 1973 or so. But we, Caltrans currently owns and operates State Route 204. There is the freeway portion towards the north, going down to more of an expressway-type facility, Golden State Avenue, as you're approaching State Route 178. And then it really turns into more of a city-street configuration, south of State Route 178. As far as traffic volumes, it generally, it decreases from you get to Freeway 99 down to Brendage. It's in the 33,000 towards Brendage. The lowest point is right about 178, about 26,000. The reason why I give you these numbers is when we start looking at a potential road diet, 36,000 vehicles is approximate threshold where you could actually go down to a four-lane facility as opposed to a six-lane facility, which we have currently for most of State Route 204. A little bit of history, Union Avenue was widened back in 1947. That was back when there was not the 99 Freeway towards the west. This was the main drag north and south that took all the interregional traffic. But the new freeway by Oak Street was built in 1963, so it no longer had to accommodate the high volumes of being the major north-south state highway. And as I mentioned before, Union Avenue, it really isn't an important interregional route, south of State Route 178. The speed limit changes, 65 by 99, and it is reduced down to about 40 in the more of the city-street configuration. And what I want to mention is, we did our last speed survey back in 2019. As the last slide showed, we currently have a 40 mile per hour speed limit on the Union Avenue portion. The 85th percentile speed is 45 miles per hour. We have to follow the procedures of the California Vehicle Code and Caltrans procedures for setting speed limits. We were able to drop the speed limit from 40 down to, I'm sorry, 45 down to 40. The one thing I want to point out is, if we are able to have the actual prevailing speed go down a little bit further, we would be actually able to reduce the speed limit to 35. So after we do the changes on Union Avenue, we do plan to go back and do a new speed survey. We have multiple projects on State Route 204 to address some of the safety issues. One is, we have a pedestrian hybrid beacon project at 8th Street. This project has already been advertised. Bids are going to open within a couple weeks. We hope to get this project in construction this summer. Pedestrian hybrid beacon is very similar to what City of Bakersfield installed on 24th Street near Pine Street. We do have a curb ramp project where we're going to be upgrading the majority of the ramps. It's over 70 ramps on both the Union Avenue and Golden State portions of State Route 204. That is going to be under construction early next year. And then finally, which will be the focus of my talk, is we do have this Clean California project, which is really giving us the opportunity to help transform and improve State Route 204. We've broken it into two projects. One is focused more on the Garza Circle to address some of the safety issues and some of the aesthetic issues. And then we're also having a separate project, more focused on Union Avenue, which will be adding bicycle facilities, bike lanes, it will be closing some sidewalk gaps, and I'll get a little more into that kind of detail. But we actually want to start construction of the Clean California projects starting this summer. I also want to note that we are looking at an additional pedestrian hybrid beacon at 10th Street. This is just a couple blocks north of the other one that will be in construction soon. We don't have a current marked crosswalk at 10th Street, but there are residents in the area who do cross the street, who try to get to the market. And we do feel that especially if we do the lane reductions, it may be more difficult for people to actually find a gap in traffic to cross. So we want to find a way to do it safely. So that's something that I currently have my engineers looking at, potentially having another pedestrian hybrid beacon at 10th Street. Okay, so the scope for the Clean California project, we are looking at, and there is a typo, it should be Class II bike lanes or Class IV cycle tracks. So a Class II bike lane is your standard bike lane with a six-inch stripe with potentially a buffer area. Class IV cycle tracks or separated bikeways have some kind of physical element. Typically, it's going to be a plastic ball or a plastic channelizer. That gives a little bit more feeling of security for the bicyclists who actually ride it. We want the bicyclist to feel comfortable, so those bicyclists who are just kind of interested but concerned, we actually want them to start riding their bikes. As I mentioned before, we have some sidewalk gaps, particularly by State Route 178. We want to close those sidewalk gaps. At the Garza Circle, we understand there's things that need to be cleaned up in that area. I will be showing you an exhibit with fencing that has some art on it. We do want to make it very attractive. We're looking at potentially painting murals, and again, I got some exhibits. And for the rest of Union Avenue, we actually are looking at some other additional beautification, which I'll get to. So at Garza Circle, we have the circle itself, and then we have either end of the bridge underneath the abutments. This is, these are areas that could use some beautification, some cleanup. So in the circle itself, we have, you know, either dirt or asphalt right beneath the bridge. And we're looking at potentially putting some cobble or stamped concrete. We don't plan to fence that area, but we just want to make it a little bit more attractive. And of course, the city of Bakersfield also received a Clean California local grant to do some other improvements for the portion of Garza Circle that is outside of the state right-of-way. Clean California, we're only focused on the area that's within the state right-of-way. So at the bridge abutments, and the picture's a little hard to see, but we've been working with city staff to kind of have a fence that makes a statement, that has some artwork. So we are, been considering doing some laser-cut metal panels. It could be either just a general pattern, or it could be an image. And again, this image is very hard to see, but it's actually an image of old cars. But you could have some, you know, iconic City of Bakersfield images, potentially. Now, because of the time it's going to take to actually put this fence in, which will require very, very large footings, we're looking at putting this fence in next year. But because of some of the safety issues, we are looking at putting a temporary fence, which would be a chain-link fence, this summer. One of the concerns also was lighting. It's dark at night. So we are looking at putting lighting underneath the bridge to help brighten it up. Some of the other improvements is potentially a mural underneath the 178 Bridge at Union Avenue, and this is where we'd be working with the Arts Council and the city local artists to try to get a mural painted down there. We're looking at potentially doing some landscape improvements at the 178 interchange. And this is one that just has a lot of sculptural features, not a lot of actual plantings because of the drought situation. And we also want to make, clean up the median areas where there are certain gaps where the city hasn't yet placed that stamped brick pattern. So we want to do, fill those gaps to make the whole corridor just look very cohesive. At the Truxton undercrossing and where the railroad bridge is, that's another opportunity for a mural. Okay, now, going back and focusing on safety, the city of Bakersfield did have a safety plan commissioned with Alta Planning and Engineering, which looked at various corridors throughout the whole city. And one corridor that was studied was Union Avenue. And as part of our Clean California project, this is providing the funding to actually implement several of those improvements, which I will touch upon some of them. But within their report, they did note that there are several intersections, you know, up and down the corridor, that have a high incidence of bicycle and pedestrian collisions. So you could note that, you know, 8th Street, you have that cluster of bike crashes. And I mentioned previously, 10th Street, we're looking at putting the pedestrian hybrid beacon. You could see there's been, you know, quite a bit of pedestrian collisions there. So those are some of the countermeasures that we are pursuing to address those concerns. Okay, some of the intersections we're looking at doing is, first of all, to help lower the speed on Union Avenue. We want to have folks feel a little bit more constrained, to narrow the lanes down to 11 feet. And as with Alta Planning and Engineering, what they were recommending also was putting high-visibility crosswalks. This would be what we call the Continental striping. We would be putting advanced limit lines so that the vehicles would actually stop farther back. That gives better sight distances for pedestrians and bicyclists who are crossing Union Avenue. And we will also be implementing at select intersections leading pedestrian interval. This is where the pedestrians actually get a few-second head start after they push the push button. And we'll be upgrading the push buttons to touchless to cross the highway. Okay, back to the volumes, traffic volumes on State Route 204. I mentioned, you know, 36,000 is the approximate threshold where we could reduce Union Avenue from six to four lanes. And I will mention that Caltrans no longer has a level service policy. In the past, we endeavored to maintain Level Service C, Level Service D, to keep traffic flowing. But one thing that we saw is that if you are always implementing improvements for Level Service C, your highways get wider and wider and wider, and it's not necessarily safer for pedestrians and bicyclists, it also contributes to suburban sprawl. So we actually have abandoned Level Service as one of our performance measures. And again, we have a focus on safety. So we're willing to live with congestion. With congestion, speed goes down. It's potentially, makes it safer for our vulnerable users. So just looking at the volumes, you could see right now, 36,000 vehicle threshold. The only place where it's not met is at F Street. And as you know, that's where High Speed Rail is looking at some improvements, a potential interchange at a location for the access for the future train station. But 36,000 vehicles will work good for, you know, 10, 10 years or so. At that point, it's all going to depend upon how, you know, the growth of the areas. But if it becomes congested, then, you know, that's something that people may be willing to tolerate, or they may be looking at other types of mode. You know, we want to get more people on bikes, more people on transit, and who knows? By then, we may all be driving autonomous vehicles. So, you know, a lot could happen into the future. So one thing that we talked specifically at the workshop we had in January was about eliminating two lanes on State Route 204. And there seemed to be that consensus. If that's going to improve safety, slow down traffic, it's also going to provide an opportunity in the future for the city to really make Union Avenue your own, potentially narrowing the entire corridor, providing wider sidewalks. It will allow us in the short term to provide a much higher bicycle facility, which will be a cycle track, which I'll show in exhibit. Now, some of the cons, when you have fewer lanes and traffic, there's fewer gaps, and that's one reason why I mentioned we're looking at potentially doing the pedestrian hybrid beacon at 10th Street. There's more congestion. On the other hand, it does slow down the traffic. On the other hand, it does slow down the traffic. And because of Senate Bill 743, VMT reduction, if you do want to add capacity-increasing lanes, so if you take away the lanes and you want to put them back, you may have to go through a whole entire environmental process to restore those lanes. We do want to accommodate traffic, and we heard that the city is kind of changing their model, kind of getting away from fixed routes. But if buses or other transit vehicles have to go with the flow of other traffic, then they would potentially be in that congestion. An alternative is actually having a transit-only lane. So what's currently being proposed is reducing one lane in each direction from just north of Brenda Javine to about 18th Street. The character of Union Avenue here is a little bit more mixed use, it's less industrial. This is where we want to slow down the traffic. We also want to stay away from the very complicated intersection, where you have the city leg of Union going towards the north. So we just want to focus on the segment between about 18th to north of Brenda Javine. And this is an exhibit of what we're considering. So we would be installing crosshatching to close the lane. We would be adding that vertical element, which would be a plastic delineator or ballard. But it will be providing a very high-quality bikeway. This would be a cycle track or separated bikeway. We would put the green paint, not for the entirety, but it would be placed on conflict areas, where you have major driveways, where you're approaching an intersection. But it would provide this very large buffer area between the motorized traffic and the bicyclist. Just another image at the railroad underpass, having the closed lane. And again, we're going to narrow the lanes from 12 feet to 11 feet, to kind of slow down the traffic, but we're going to have this very generous bicycle facility. And just the treatment for the right turns at the intersections, we do intend to keep the right turn lanes where we can. The other thing on this exhibit where I want to show is parking. We understand there are some areas along State Route 204 that we may want to keep parking, either by, of course, there's some housing, perhaps by the market, perhaps by church. This is where we're going to want to have additional feedback from the city and the community. Where do we want to keep parking? But that striped-out lane will allow us the opportunity to keep parking, as well as having a bicycle facility. And this is what the parking would look like. Sometimes it's called a floating bike lane. The parked vehicles actually provides physical protection for the people riding their bikes along the curb. And just the mere presence of vehicles will tend to also slow down traffic. Having that closed lane also provides an opportunity to provide safer pedestrian crossings, so we could actually install islands, perhaps in concrete, it might just be plastic channelizers, but the pedestrians would cross the bicycle facility and then actually have about a 10-foot of area where they would be protected from traffic before they actually crossed the remainder of the highway. That said, that is my presentation. I would welcome any kind of comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lou. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Lou, for the presentation today, and thank you for all of your work and for being so responsive to the call for action on Union Avenue. This is a very important issue for many of our constituents who live near this corridor and who often walk and bicycle to get to work, to school, or just to get to the market. And so I really appreciate all of the efforts that are being made here. You made the point earlier, but it bears repeating that people make mistakes, but those mistakes should not result in the death of a pedestrian. And so I want to thank you for that, for recognizing that. Just one quick question related to the HOC signals. Are there, is the intent to also install pedestrian refuges in the median in order to cross the roadway, or is it just one complete movement, one complete action?
So, yeah, for the pedestrian hybrid beacon, also known as the HOC, we will be timing the, giving enough time for a pedestrian to cross from one side to the other. We don't necessarily want people to stop within the median, but there will be an opportunity if they can't make it all the way across. I'll have to double-check whether we're going to have that pedestrian push button within the median, but generally, that's what we try to do. That way, someone who is elderly or disabled, who cannot make it all the way across, they are able to have that refuge in the middle.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, John, for responding. It's tragic what happens on Union Avenue, and it'd be great to see things fixed, to make it much safer. The cycle track looks great. I think that would really make it safer, and shortening the distance for pedestrians has got to make it safer, and the slower speeds, obviously. Even if you do get hit, when somebody's going 30 or 35, your chance of survival is much better than that. So, yeah, I think it's great, and look forward to seeing it work. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Going to echo what my colleagues have shared, thank you so much for the urgency that I think this issue deserves, and it's so important to our community. For a very long time, this has been a critical issue, and so I'm excited that Caltrans is excited about moving this project forward in a timely manner. So I do have a quick question for you. I know we talked about a number of different things. Can you describe to me what exactly can be included in the Clean California grant that Caltrans is going to be moving forward, not the one that the city's applying for?
Sure, okay. So, yeah, so our district received about $26 million to distribute amongst all our cities and counties. We made a decision to put $5 million to State Route 204. So it's the biggest chunk within our district that we are, because we know that the needs are great. So as far as what we could actually do, the intention of the program is for, to beautify, to make it easier to maintain, it's for safety. And for safety, it could be safety of the maintenance workers, safety of the users, but also safety for the vulnerable users, like pedestrians and bicyclists. So that's why we have a big emphasis on putting these complete streets elements. So it's a little bit open-ended, so the main constraints is, it has to be within state right-of-way, and it has to be non-controversial, because we can't get bogged down in acquiring right-of-way and the environmental process.
Got it. Okay, yeah. I ask that only because I know $5 million sounds like a lot of money, but it can go pretty quickly when we're talking about infrastructure projects. So I guess, as a follow-up, what today that was presented, that is part of the package and that your engineering staff is looking into, is not going to be included in the initial $5 million allocation?
So everything I presented to you is going to be included.
Fantastic.
So as far as the road diet, the fence up at Garsa's, yeah, the cycle track, the murals, the median paving, that is all included. Now, as we get into the actual design and doing cost estimates, we may have some issues and may have to start cutting. But our intention is, as we design, we want to keep in close communication with staff, as well as all the stakeholders, because we want to make sure there's public input. I'd be more than happy to give another presentation to the council as we get very close to actually wrapping up the project, to go out the bid, to see if there's any kind of final comments.
Fantastic, that sounds great. And with that, I just would respectfully ask that, and I know Greg and his team are deeply engaged with Caltrans at this point, but to begin discussing, or if not, continue those discussions about what's going to happen south of Highway 58. I know that there's a mile, mile-and-a-half stretch that is within the city's jurisdiction, and so I know we've already made some allocations, we're doing some work there, so I just want to make sure that as we're doing that work, it looks consistent with what Caltrans is putting together here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Thank you, Mr. Lou. Under your leadership, under Ms. Gomez's leadership, we've seen such an increase in your responsiveness to our constituent issues that we send you almost daily. Thank you for your responsiveness to all our requests and our monthly Zooms, and certainly the request to prioritize Bakersfield as your favorite city. Continue to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk? Yes, we do need a motion, sorry.
Motion to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Parlier absent.
Thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, the next item, please.
Close session item 4A, conference with legal counsel, potential litigation, one potential case regarding assertions by a security paving company of monies owed by city for the Beltway Operational Improvements Project.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Motion to adjourn to closed session.
We're adjourned to closed session. Reconvening the 3:30 meeting, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. There was one item on closed session this afternoon, item 4A, and by a 6 to 0 vote, with Councilmember Parlier absent, the city attorney was given direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, the 3:30 meeting stands adjourned at 5:16.